Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, September 8th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, justous for all.
All right, we'll start, we have a few appointments here. We're still waiting on Catherine. She said, what, about two or three minutes or so?
Yeah, she should be.
All right, so let's start with open forum. Anyone here for open forum? Okay, both of you guys together or are you separate?
Together.
All right, come on up then. So have you come up and just state your name and...
Kevin Francis, we're at Old Plymouth Street in East Bridgewater.
Okay.
Wayne Romanowitz, same street, but I live on the Bridgewater side of the street.
Okay, take a seat. Tell me what's going on.
So we just wanted to see what the update is on, like if there's gonna be any speed bumps, what to do there, like there was a, I guess there was a, something was gonna happen where there was gonna be a, I don't know, I'm lost, like a, like a department or something like that.
Traffic Advisory Committee?
Right, some, you know, to see about, to assess the situation over there, 'cause it's, it's gotten worse. I mean, the 25 miles per hour, it didn't do anything. I mean, it's a, it's a drag strip over there and it's, it's gotten bad in the trucks, traffic. We actually put up cameras and, you know, footage of the, the strip, you know, it's...
Sure.
The, the driving is pretty aggressive over there. We just wanted to know what, Wayne was talking with Bridgewater.
Okay.
Counselor Merrily Hunt.
Okay.
But she's out in Scotland right now, I guess. So, it's a good place, yeah. But anyhow, she's, she's visiting out there and she won't be back till the 15th. But I brought up the beginning conversation with her since, the town is, owns the road, but we have residents on both sides of the street different, and it will be, I brought up the idea of the speed bumps with the, and the cost. It might be Bridgewater splitting half that cost, and she was open-minded to that. But she says she had to run that by the town manager.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a new town manager there, so. And this is, the last time we were here, you had asked me to approach them, so this is what I've done.
Okay.
So I invested $300 in cameras, but only needed one to look at the road. And it's hard to decipher, but, but when you see somebody going down the street, I, I mean, sometimes they're going down there 50, 60 miles an hour, and it's 25. I've called, you know, the East Bridgewater Police, I think it was Sergeant Flynn, I'm not sure, because I know...
It is Flynn.
It was a...
He's the safety officer, traffic officer.
He's the deputy who's by traffic, yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I get, the, the signs were supposed to be changed to 25 miles an hour, but they didn't go up for six months. You had approved it in August of '24, and we waited, and we waited and waited, so finally, when February came around and in springtime, and I says, I just says, I says, "So, enough," I called, and I went down to the DPW. I still had it on my phone. It showed the minutes, so I showed it to those people, and they says, "Oh, yeah, oh, yeah." Well, but we, we have to check with the town in order to, to get it done. So they came out, and they put a sign up, 25 on one side of the street. I says, "Okay." When I looked out the other side of the street, there wasn't a sign there. So what they did was, I, I went down to the town, DPW, and they says, "Oh, we don't have any signs, we only have one." So I says, "Okay, one side's 25, the other side's 35." That's how it's reading right now. So I called Sergeant Flynn, and he explained it to me. Says, "Yeah, what I'll do is I'll come down and put a sign up, one of those signs that flashes." But I says, "The sign has been changed, the, the speed limit is actually 25 now." So he put the sign on to 35, and I didn't get into it, and, and he put 35 there to check anybody going over 35. But the actual speed limit's 25. So after about four days, took it down, and I haven't seen anybody since. So I asked him about it. I says, "Why can't you have, why can't we have more of a presence on there to stop this?" Because there's trucks that come down there from Chuck Rins and, and there's a lot of big trucks all the time. It even come from that, with that place where they load up with stone, over there, Bridgewater Stone.
And the gravel, yep.
Yeah, they're coming down the street all the time, too. They're loaded.
Right.
And they just go right by the sign, and it says right there, it's marked plainly on both ends of the street, but they just go ahead and do what they want.
Right. So we did, so Charlie, can you fresh remember that, we had passed something with, over a year ago?
Right, so periodically, I've checked with Bridgewater, with the DPW there.
Yep.
And they have not, in fact, on the Bridgewater side, approved a 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Okay.
We have.
Right.
So is that why, is the...
That's why you have two different...
Okay.
Oh, no, 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 they're, they're both 25 now.
Well, they haven't, I mean, I'll check again with them, but I have...
Oh, no, 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 they only couldn't put a 25 on both sides of the street because they didn't have the sign available.
Is there one in Bridgewater?
They ordered the sign, and it came up, and they put it up there a couple weeks later.
Wouldn't it be up to Bridgewater to put up the 25 on their side?
No, but, no, East Bridgewater Street.
You own the street.
The other side is, his house is in Bridgewater. The street that we're on is East Bridgewater.
My residence is in Bridgewater, but the street is owned by East Bridgewater.
Because, Rob, it's, it's the section from Plymouth...
But the opposite side is Bridgewater, so as Charlie was stating, we need Bridgewater.
Right, we need Bridgewater. I would assume, right.
Well, it's there already, though, and...
So the signs are up, they're all set.
They're both there.
There are signs now that say 25, 'cause I thought you just said some...
No, no.
Well, it was only there temporarily until they changed it, you know, until they got the other sign, okay?
So there's no more 35?
There's no more 35, yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's no more...
We're past that.
Right.
We're past that, yeah.
We're looking at now the speed bumps.
We can honestly tell you, we do have the Traffic Safety Committee, which we could, I'll let Rebecca speak on as well, Charlie, but with that, speed bumps is something that we've looked at in a lot of different areas in town, and speed bumps is not an option within our town, just based on the decisions we made for the Traffic Building Safety Committee.
Yeah, I don't know, it's a small, all right, so the street that I'm talking about is from, from Plymouth, regular Plymouth Street?
Yep, we know exactly where you are very well. I, I check it out frequently, and when we do have the manpower, we put options up there.
I've never seen anybody down there. I'm sorry, I've never seen anybody down there.
I'm sorry to hear that, but we do put officers...
So am I.
I'm sorry?
So am I, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yep, well, you could call Bridgewater, and they could do it and enforce it on one side as well, on your side, but...
I've done that.
We have officers, when they're available, go up there and do, and do traffic.
They haven't been there either.
I don't know, so. I'm not gonna get into it with you, sir, but we do have a Traffic Building, a Safety Committee, and we can, we can speak with the, you know, we could...
Now, have you, have you formally, so before we go here, so there is, there is a, a committee that has been formed within the last year, as Chief said, and, let me speak, and then Rebecca's on that as well, as well as the DPW Director, Fire Chief, and I think we have...
Plenty Building Commissioner.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, there's someone...
Have you submitted anything to, to that, to that group to discuss this, this potential? I mean, obviously, you've got some concerns, but I mean, this would be something that we would have that committee look at, not only on the aspect of East Bridgewater, but what the rules and regulations would be for us to deal with.
Well, what, can I just...
Okay, yeah, sure, sure. And then, once that's done, we can go ahead and, you know, talk to Bridgewater at the same time to figure out what, you know, what their decision over there was as well. I mean, I, I think it's, you know, important for that committee that we formed, because there's been a, a number of streets that we've dealt with, and in some fashion, what was the one we had with the two gentlemen came...
Summit.
Summit, thank you. Summit Street, which we were able to come up with a, a very good compromise based on what's going on.
But not speed bumps.
Not speed bumps, yeah, there's, there's some other...
Well, I can't understand why that's not an option, but, but you got a picture of that, in Bridgewater, they're, they're using speed bumps.
Yeah, there's, well, it's in South Elm Street in, in Bridgewater.
Okay.
And it's, it's residential area, just like ours, it's a longer strip.
Sure.
And they have two spots where they have these real nice speed bumps, and I talked to the, the neighbors about it, and they says, "Yeah, plow trucks have no problem with these at all," so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we can...
It's kind of...
Sure, we can bring this up and have a discussion, you know, further based on the information, you know, you've got from the other town, but it had, you know, really should be with, with the committee first, that we have, why have that committee in force?
Can, can we, like, how do we...
So if you go onto the town of East Bridgewater website, you'll see, go under Committees, Traffic Advisory Committee, there's a form, very simple form, you can just complete, and you can send it to us right, through, you can bring it to us, you can email us, and once we get that information, you'll be put on the next agenda. We meet once a month, and we get back to you very quick.
All right.
Yeah, just, that group would be best to speak to. Obviously, these are the officials that, you know, we entrust to, to give us the information on what's happening.
Well, when I left, she's the councilman or selectman there, Mrs. Hunt, and she was supposed to send out a letter with the discussion that I had to the police chief in Bridgewater, and was supposed to get back to the police chief over here in East Bridgewater. I don't know if he's aware of it, this is, this happened two weeks ago, so...
I think just kind of like the, a formal process to...
I am chief, I haven't heard anything from Chief Del Monte, but I could follow up with Chief Del Monte. I haven't heard anything.
You haven't heard anything from...
Yeah, there's information right on.
And with the Traffic Safety Committee, we have, we could explain to you more in depth when, when we take it under a, a committee advisement about the speed bumps, the pros and cons, 'cause we have a dress list with numerous streets in town with people requesting speed bumps in certain situations, et cetera. But there are pros and cons to the speed bumps we can get into at a later date, when you receive your...
Well, it's been going on for years, since I've been there. We, I, you know, I've been, you know, trying to move this along, but every time I do, it just seems to get put back on the back burner, and...
A lot of it comes down to, you know, once again, with us, it's manpower, and obviously, there's costs involved with everything, so there's, we look at the safety, we look at the overall pros and cons of it.
Would that thing, would those speed bumps, I'm sure would do the trick, it would slow them down, and we wouldn't have...
We've actually had engineering, we've had some studies on the speed bumps, so we have some more information, we can get back to you on the speed bumps, so I don't want to speak out of turn, because we've got a committee for that.
As, as Chief said, I would get to that, you know, that meeting, it's obviously a public meeting, it's why you can have discussion at that time, but, you know, Rebecca, with the, you said the website is where they can...
Yep, right under Boards and Committees, you'll see the Traffic Advisory Committee, and there'll be a, a fill-in, a fill-in form, right there.
All right.
And then we'll get back to you.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep, thank you. All right, anyone else for open forum?
Could I have another chair?
Sure, yeah.
So that they don't stand awkwardly. I appreciate it.
One more, please, sir, thank you. How you doing?
Just for the record, just want to state your name.
Yes, my name is Brian Mulcey. I am the Business Agent and Business Representative for Teemshire's Local 653. We represent the clerical employees in town. We came here today to discuss with you, because I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, how much communication is done between you and the people who are doing the negotiating on the town's behalf. So we came here to speak directly to you on how disturbing we believe negotiations have gone, not just the process, but the results. I have been involved in some major negotiations in the last six years with multi-billion dollar companies, Cisco, UPS, some pretty tough contentious negotiations. Town employee negotiations should not go that way, and they did. And I find that very disturbing, because in most towns, most municipalities try to take care of, of their employees, they're one of them, they're the taxpayers, they live here, they grow up here. And to go through that type of atmosphere in a place like East Bridgewater especially, where I grew up, was very disheartening. It was like pulling teeth to try to get something to, to show these women how much you care about their employment and what they do for this town. I get that there's not a lot of money in this town, we all understand that, and these jobs in general don't make these people rich. They don't. But to go through that process in, in two different atmospheres, because I also represent the DPW, and it was like walking into two totally different rooms, talking to two totally different employers, where one actually cared, tried to work, and the other just did not. Now, we put forth a number of proposals, some of which would actually eliminate an arbitration case right now, where we believe the town is overpaying its temps, and would essentially save money by winning that case, we would. That would come off the table if we would just have parity and have the same grid scale for the union and non-union. The fact that we're going to now mediation and fact-finding is going to cost the town money. The amount of money that you would save by not going to mediation and not having those arbitration cases is literally the blast proposal we put on. It was almost a wash, but yet, we're still going through this process. I, I'm just dumbfounded at, at some of the answers. I, I even have department heads telling some of the employees that some of this money can be found within their own departments, and that some people are even stating that they actually planned for some of these increases. And yet, we're still being told there's no money. So I, I just don't understand it. I wanted to bring forth this to you, and I wanted to give them an opportunity to speak to you as well. So I'll give the floor to Olivia.
Do you want me to say who I am first?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
So my name's Olivia Verhagen, I'm the Senior Clerk in the Assessors' Office, and I'm also the Union Steward. So I wanted to speak because I've been the Steward since 2023, I think, almost two years, and I volunteered because I care about the union, I want everyone to get represented fairly. And I joined the municipality, this was my first town job, and I really enjoy working here. I came here with the intent to stay working here, and unfortunately, Friday will be my last day. And it is mostly one of the reasons due to pay, 'cause there's not an increase happening. I've been in every single negotiation, I've been fighting for the town, I've given multiple scenarios, made a lot of spreadsheets, done a lot of math, and nothing's happening. It's a help-me-help-you situation, and there's no help coming back. I understand money's tight, I get that, I get that the town has no money, and I would not be saying a word if the town had no money and no one in town got a raise. That's a very different story. It's going certain places, and I understand contracts get signed ahead of time. I fully understand. But no money is no money. And when contracts are being signed, when this contract's being done, it just doesn't make any sense. So that's my piece.
My name's Candy Boyle, and I am a Senior Clerk, and I work in the Building Department, and I just wrote down a, a couple of things about it as well. I mean, I was, we're all being told that there is no money or whatever, but it seems like the only people who aren't being included in getting any money are all the women in the town hall. That's one of my feelings toward it. My other feeling toward it is there are people in this room that I'm gonna mention names, but it's whatever. I know that Charlie received his raise, I know Lee just got a promotion, and she received a raise. I know Rebecca just took five hours less work week, but her pay didn't get cut, so that's technically like getting a raise. And there are other management that have gotten raises as well. We're not asking for much, we're asking just, if you're not gonna give us a raise, just make us equal with non-members, and the union members put us all one, on one pay gray scale, and then when everybody gets money, everybody gets money, when everybody doesn't get money, everybody doesn't get money. We're not asking for a lot, so.
Thank you. Sandra?
I'm just here for support.
Okay, that's a good place to be.
I, I don't feel like we can really say anything, can we?
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I appreciate that you came in, and it, and it's good to hear from you guys directly, but I, I mean, in terms of anything else, I don't think that...
No, I mean, the only thing I would say is...
The town council would be happy if we said much.
Right, right, yeah, there is some, some gray area there, what could be said. I will say from the last time you guys came in, I mean, you know, there has been, you know, work to try to figure out what we can do. It's certainly not from our perspective, you know, slying anybody, especially these people that work in this office. I mean, anyone knows me, especially ones that I talk to, these three and, and other ones in the office here, know that, you know, this is the most important role, I feel, that we have with, you know, with our core union workers. We are in a tough spot, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we thought maybe we could get to the point. Some of those other departments do have things that they're able to do, as you brought up, DPW, that we don't have with clerical, to work with, but that being said, you know, without going to full detail, you know, I, I'd be wrong in thinking that we haven't, this board at least hasn't tried to find ways to, to make it work for, for, for these girls, for sure, you know. Whether this is the end step or not, I don't know, women, sorry, girls, women. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I know, sure, what I could say, what I can't say. Last time I said something, I got a lawsuit thrown at me, so I want to make sure I don't, I don't go down that road again, but...
Hey, do you want it, can I just, 'cause I really want to say one thing, just because, you know, you guys know me, and you know that I used to be a town employee here, it's been a while. But when I was Library Director, the women at the library got left behind on step increases for several years, and that was terrible. And I fought really hard to make that not happen again, so to hear you say that you think that you're being singled out 'cause you're women, that's not from my perspective at all what's happening. I think that is just a logistical situation because of the makeup of the union, but I don't, I would not stand for that if that is what was, was going on, because I would, I would fight against that. So just from a personal perspective, I just want you to know that.
Yeah, and especially from the First Majority Female Board, that is not something that we intend for you to feel like whatsoever, so first and foremost, that's it. Also, secondly, I think it's the most important thing that you guys have come forward, because we do need to hear both sides, it is important, so thank you for coming forward. And as I said to you, Olivia, last time, last, my grandfather was in the union for 30 years, so I appreciate all the work that you guys do. Thank you so much for coming forward, it gives us perspective going into these negotiations, so I appreciate you coming. You're always welcome, sit at the table.
Thank you.
And Olivia, I will see you next week in the town of Carver.
Oh, yes!
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, is there anyone else for open forum? Oh, all right, seeing none, I'll close open forum, and we'll move into our appointments. Phew, all right, Chief, come on up.
Thank you. I just want to briefly just say congratulations, we have three new full-time officers that just completed a 22-week academy. As of today, they'll be going into a field training program for up to 12 weeks with a field training officer, and I just wanted to congratulate them, and welcome to the department, and we're gonna get them officially sworn in. Thank you for being here.
I'll do one at a time, just to... We're gonna do this a little differently, 'cause you guys have a different oath than fire, so I'm gonna have you raise your right hand. After I'm done stating what you're swearing to, you just say, "I do." We're not married after this, in front of you.
Stand up if you want.
That'd be weird. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, Connor McDermott, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that you will fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction?
I do.
One more. Do you, Connor McDermott, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of East Bridgewater police officer according to the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, so we're gonna have you go ahead and sign. So you just have to sign your oath card right there, and then this for you. You have a pen, perfect. Okay, and I'm gonna take this, and you get to keep this. Congratulations. Do you, Colin Brink, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that you will fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction?
I do.
Do you, Colin Brink, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of an East Bridgewater police officer according to the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater, so help you God?
I do.
We're gonna have you do the same thing. They come prepared, so that's good.
They better.
Okay, and I'm gonna take this, and you get to keep this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you, Jesse Hager, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that you will fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction?
I do.
Do you, Jesse Hager, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of an East Bridgewater police officer according to the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, so Jesse, yours is wrong. I'm gonna have to get you a different oath. I'm gonna wait and not have you sign this one, 'cause they have to run you. I will get you a different one.
Okay.
Chief, can we get a photo with...
Yes. We'll let them shake all their hands. So now we can put them on Old Plymouth Street and do traffic.
Yes, I know, I gotta work on that.
We'll go right to Old Plymouth Street.
You can stand up if I need...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more over here. You want them?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Diane, you coming up here?
No, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Keep moving you around.
I know.
Yeah, that was convenient to help, but...
Right, I was, no, I didn't see that coming. Didn't see it coming at all. Guess I should've. Rebecca kind of gave me hints, so.
Not enough.
All right, crowd has thinned out. All right. Crowd has thinned out. I guess we can move into a 6:30 appointment.
We have a 6:15.
6:15.
Oh, jeez, I went right by that one, I'm sorry. All right, 6:15, discussion with Henry Mitchell to purchase the town land. Come on up, Henry. Just going to state your name and address when you come up, and then we can...
Henry A. Mitchell, 95 Haywood Road, East Bridgewater.
Okay.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
What's going on?
So, just inquiring, trying to give you guys some money. Everybody's looking for money, so I'm just trying to purchase some property that abuts the back of my property, which is town property, to add to a buffer to what I have existing.
All right.
So, I've talked to Charlie about it, and he said, you know, I wrote the letter, and here I am trying to discuss it to see if it's something that we can make happen.
All right. Before I see if there's any abutters or anybody has any questions, Charlie, give us a little history here, what's-
So, Mr. Mitchell, there's a 95, is it?
Yep.
You know, Haywood, the town, his back lot line abuts the town land behind that, and what he'd like to do, at least, is extend it back at least 50 feet. I'm not sure-
Yeah, I'd like to go minimum. So my lot is 150 wide, so it'd be 150 wide by 50 deep, so 50 by 150, 7,500 square feet, you know. I'd be interested to buy a 75.
So, one of the things I did during the weekend was, I had not reviewed the deeds, actually. I knew obviously we had, it was town land and everything like that, but there is on the deed, the, when the town accepted that parcel back, I believe in 1989 or so, there was a provision that said it was Conservation Commission land, and that was to be set aside for, you know, water recharge areas, things like that. What's considered Article 97 land, and Article 97 is part of the Massachusetts Constitution, would require, given that there's that provision in the deed, it would require a town meeting vote, two-thirds of the town meeting to say yes, that we can sell that land. Also, it would require the state legislature, as part of that two-thirds vote, we'd have to send up a special legislation to be approved by the legislature, again, by a two-thirds vote, allowing for the sale of the land. There's other provisions in there, we might, you know, the legislature would ask us, well, what public purpose does this serve, other than us getting money and selling the land? And many times you'll see Article 97 requests associated with a municipal building or school or something like that, and there's usually a provision in there that the town will then also, if it's selling the land or eliminating those provisions, that we either obtain another parcel or obtain similar provisions on a privately held parcel. So, my recommendation to the board would be, if Mr. Mitchell would like to proceed with this, is they bring the article to town meeting. He would need nine other signatures on the petition for the town to approve this at the May town meeting. It only requires 10 signatures at an annual town meeting, requires 100 at a special, because annual is far easier. The article would have to be brought to the town meeting no matter who brought it, whether it was the board or whether it was Mr. Mitchell, and since Mr. Mitchell is the advocate for this, my recommendation to the board would be that he do so, get the other nine signatures on the petition article, bring it to town meeting, and one way or the other, the townspeople would make that decision.
Sure, sure. Okay. Alex, were you here for this? Have any information or something you want to share with the board, or?
I'm here just because there's been some ongoing enforcement on the land that he's looking to-
All right, you want to come up and just give us a little brief history of what that is? Appreciate. Just for the record, we know where you are, but just stay there.
Yeah, so I'm Alex Welch, I'm the conservation agent for the town. I'm just here, just in case you guys had questions about the property. The information Charlie just provided, we kind of just found out, but the property has some ongoing enforcement. We've already issued an enforcement, we, as in the commission, I should say, has already issued an enforcement order, had discussions with Mr. Mitchell to essentially leave the area alone and do some, like, reseeding of some of the work that's gone out. There's like, been an excavated pond, if you will. It's dry, we're pretty much in drought right now, so he wants to purchase that so that he can manage it and not just have to let it go because it is, again, town land. So, that's got-
Would there be some guidelines to that, that he'd have to follow in order? I mean, obviously he couldn't-
I'm sure.
Put some stuff on there, like-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Put a pool there or something along those-
No.
Yeah, right, so-
I wouldn't put any structure or any building. I just need it as a buffer. Like, I don't care if it was deemed non-buildable and have nothing on it, like, you know what I mean?
Right.
I'm not looking to have it to extend my properties for building, but it does work good as a buffer, because where I have built is up to the property line, and I've planted grass along the back, which encroaches the town property. So I just want to be able to keep that back, that atmosphere, you know what I mean, really, is what it boils down to.
So-
And give me, you know, proper setbacks if I did want to do something else.
So as it stands right now, let's just say the property is not purchased, the enforcement order will be followed. If the property is purchased, what he'll have to do is file what's called an after-the-fact notice of intent filing, so he will apply to keep that pond, you know, in pond shape, we'll call it, not, you know, to be able to manage it and whatnot, and any other work that he would want to do back there, he would have to get permitted. It's still subject to the Wetlands Protection Act, state law. So, yeah, that's kind of the two avenues. If he wants to keep it, if and when he owns it, then he'll have to file to show that it's going to remain there, otherwise, he'll follow the enforcement order and it'll go back.
Carol, Catherine?
No, I would go along with Charlie's recommendation that, you know, you would have to bring an article to town meeting, but also I think there are abutters.
Yeah, there are some abutters. Anyone else have any? Yep. Why don't you come on? Thank you. You audience. Come on up. You're just going to state your name and... Any questions you have? We could certainly see if we can get the best answer.
I typed it out, just because English is not my first language, so-
Right.
Hello, members of the select board. I'm aware this evening that Mr. Mitchell from 95 Haywood Ave. is approaching the board with purchasing the town-owned land that's behind his property line. The residents of our neighborhood object to the sale or the purchase as Mr. Mitchell has a longstanding history of nefarious activity and is currently under enforcement orders from the Conservation Commission as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. His deck actually sits in the conservation land. Mr. Mitchell attempted to annex the property in question and was caught clearing town-owned conservation land, digging a pond, damming a pond, so every time there are torrential downpours, the water backs up into neighboring yards, and he is refusing to take the dam down. He filled that pond and will probably continue to fill that pond with a garden hose. Mr. Mitchell is now under an enforcement order from the Conservation regarding his property. Mr. Mitchell currently is violating certain enforcement order by still storing his motorcycle trailer, his quad, and he is continuing to mow. He mowed the lawn today. The enforcement notice, which was voted upon the zoning board at the last week at the deliberation hearing Wednesday, September 3rd, has yet to be issued, but as it is a public record, it involves massive consequences for his actions of building the addition to his garage without a permit encroaching upon and touching the town land. This purchase, which is to be discussed this evening, is for not a purpose than for Mr. Mitchell to attempt to avoid the legal consequences of his illegal actions, and once again, the members of this neighborhood oppose the sale.
And I'm sorry, just for the record, you just stated-
Natalia De Sette, 85 Haywood Ave.
Hey, buddy.
I'm Nancy Morris, 74 Haywood Road, and next month, my husband and I have lived in that house 53 years, and it's always been a nice, quiet neighborhood. When he was doing his building, which doesn't have to do with the conservation, the trucks have been going up and down, and he's been running a business, he's been chastised for that, again, with the conservation, mowing, riding a quad in the conservation property, and at the zoning board last week, they did say that when he gets, he's going to be given permits if he builds, the building's already there, but he has to submit a plan to get a permit.
Nothing's been-
The plans have already all been submitted.
There's no occupant's permit.
No, and he's been in there for many, many years.
I've been living there for 30 years.
My question is, if someone builds something and the town has no record of it, so that person is not paying taxes on that property, I don't feel that person is a good town resident. We all need to pay our taxes and our water bills.
I've been paying taxes for 35 years.
Our water bills, our taxes, but if someone isn't being assessed for something because there's no permits involved, I don't think that's fair to the rest of the town.
It gets reassessed every two years. Every year it gets reassessed.
Okay, well, I appreciate both of you guys.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, Alex, you want to add to that?
I just had a comment. So, yes, the area that was, is town land is not to be mowed, and that has been ceded multiple times, and that is to be let go, and it does go right up against the back of his now-existing structure, which has been subject to special permit meetings and zoning board, things outside of our purview. So, yeah, that is not to be mowed. However, also a correction on the statement that was just said by the abutter, there is a small man-made dam, and that is to be removed this fall. So, it's really quite small, just to keep water in that pond. It doesn't even do that, the pond seems to just naturally drain through, but it is to be removed, that dam, just for the record. That's part of that enforcement order.
I appreciate that. This has been one hell of a meeting. Let's say, I don't know what that-
I mean, it's not really up to us, is it?
No, Mr. Mitchell cannot-
Yeah.
-sign their articles for the town meeting with nine other signatures and request the town start the process of being able to sell the land, which requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting because it's conservation land, and then also a vote by the state legislature.
Right, and I'm assuming at that time, anybody that has opposition would be able-
Well, yeah, I mean, anybody who's a registered voter will be able to speak at that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, you know, we want to stop that process, but...
I think the purpose of town meeting, right, is to have these disputes and to bring your concerns, but also to bring your, why you want this. This is the whole purpose of it, regardless of either parties, if you like it, that's where you hash it out. Unfortunately, we live in New England, we get town meeting, that's what it's there for, right? I'm sure Alex will be at the meeting as well and be able to answer any questions logistically in regards to enforcement orders or legislat-
Everybody's aware of what's going on.
So-
Trying to pull the wool over anyone's face.
So I think this is the best, it's the correct avenue to go through. I've also seen land purchases go through the legislature, I'm familiar with the process. It is lengthy, just to make you aware, but-
I get it, everything is-
It is the necessary things that happen, as long as you get that approval at the town. So that's really, and I just, I guess, have one question, but logistically, just for people at home that maybe don't have the answer, and I don't know if you guys believe, in regards to an enforcement order, what is that specifically? Does it give him X amount of months in order to fulfill the enforcement? Is that, I don't know if you believe-
Yes.
Just as a clarification.
Yep, so it gives him a certain amount of time. That's usually determined at a Conservation Commission hearing.
Okay.
We like to have the residents come in and discuss what works for them, so, because we want-
Give them a timeline?
Yeah, and see what works for them. They can be amended, things, life happens, things come up. The commission's, you know, pretty receptive to people's needs, but we don't like to see them go out years. But yes, it gives them a timeline to have work done by, and it outlines the work to be done. Sometimes, they'll have to do an additional filing. It really depends. They're always different, how you word them, I'll say.
Okay.
Just one other thing, I'm not entirely sure, but in selling of the property, it may be interest, it may gain support from the town, neighbors and so forth, if you were to explore requiring that an easement is put onto that property so that it can't potentially be built. So like, you could sell it to him, or, you know, that parcel, or what would be a parcel, I guess, you could sell it to them with, again, some kind of restriction for conservation.
Definitely deed restrictions, 100%.
Yeah, so that it will be a pond, or it won't get built, and it will be allowed to be natural.
Keep a natural habitat, yeah.
That might be something to gain some support and, you know, potentially selling it.
So I want to question who I may talk to, because I don't know who to address. So the neighbor that just spoke at 85, so I've built up to my property line, I have a 10-foot, you know, to the back of my property, and I haven't built anything on town property, but I am up to it, and I do, you know, having that extra property would give me proper setbacks and things I need if I wanted to build or do something else, or a different garage, or whatever I wanted to do. It would help in multiple aspects, you know, it's going to help me on my setbacks, it's going to help have a backyard, it's just going to give me a bigger buffer. The question is, is the neighbor, they seem to be very obtuse about everything that I do, so they're worried about what I'm doing, but they have a fence, my neighbor to the right that just spoke, they have a fence that is four feet on town property, that runs along town property, and it is on town property, and who do I speak to to address that?
It'll be the select board, because the fence wouldn't be, it's not a zoning issue. Basically, it would, through the select board, we'd have to go out, take a look at the property lines, where the-
Because I just had my back right corner staked, I just had my entire lot, the back area that I'm interested in, everything has been surveyed.
Right.
And my back survey on my right-hand side hangs on their fence five feet back from the corner, and our lines are all the same on that property line. So they have a fence and gardens that are on town property, and they're getting mad at me for what I'm doing on town property.
Yeah, we don't want to get into the dispute, but I remember some years ago that there was actually a fence-
Fence viewer?
Yes, because we had an issue down at the store down by Robbins Pond. Remember that whole deal there? And, yeah, they-
That little house that's out in the river?
We don't have a fence viewer, but the real, that usually is dealing with private individuals where there's a lot line between two properties.
Right.
What his accusation is, is that someone's encroaching on town land.
Right.
They have a fence on town property, yeah.
So it would go through the board, the board would then-
Would they file something or sit?
A letter or whatever, making a complaint to the board.
Guess that's where he'd go with it.
And we would go from there, and we, whatever surveys we would have available, we might have to send somebody out to look at lot lines and markers and everything to determine whether the fence, in fact, is on town property or not.
Yeah.
I know, does your machin orders for all your things?
So the other portion, everything falls into his plate as far as filing for-
Right.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation, because no matter who would be proposing it, we'll still need to go to town meeting. Mr. Mitchell is the one who's interested in the sale of the land, he can bring the article to town meeting.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, folks, have a great night.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Alex.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, now we're going to move to 6:30. Katie Kavanaugh, we have-
Quarter of eight.
Really is.
I was going to say, look at the early.
Look at the- Do you want to sit down? No, I'm okay.
Katie, who do you not like, and what would you like to talk about?
Seems to be more of a problem with me, so you guys can start.
Well, anyways, you guys both, just for the record, just-
Kathleen Kavanaugh, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, 645 Summer Street, Town Clerk.
Melanie Dean, 627 Spring Street, Town Accountant.
Thank you. What are we doing?
I was asked to come to the meeting to discuss my salary.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, what had happened on this is that we're going to try and get this rectified at town meeting, is that the town, when it votes its budget article, says it's also approving the salaries for elected officials. That's a separate thing from appropriating the money. We've not had a problem with that before, but the thing is that when we approve the town clerk's budget, we only have two line items, basically, there might be one for elections or something like that, but in the clerk's office, there's a line item for salaries, there's a line item for non-salary or non-wage percent. When we vote the budget, we're not voting those sub-line items that might, for instance, include the department head salary. It's maybe three or four sub-line items within the personnel. So we're not officially setting the salary for the town clerk when we approve the budget. No more, no less, and we're not setting the salaries for the board. The board's line item is inside the select board's office with the personnel, with myself and with Rebecca and Lee and such, so we don't officially approve those salaries. Most towns have separate articles that specifically lay out, here in East Bridgewater, it's very few, select board, the assessors, the board of health, the town clerk, and the moderator are all the elected officials that actually get salaries. So one of the things we're going to try and do in October is correct that, have a separate article that officially sets the salaries. When Katie had submitted her budget, and that budget was approved, recommended by the finance committee, and was approved at town meeting, that included sufficient money that the town clerk's salaries would increase by 2%. But there was no official vote to do, to increase the salary. We appropriate the money.
You have the money, you just can't collect it?
Right, well, so- Right, well, so.
It's about as clear as mud.
So there'll be, there'll be a question. If you look at, if you look at the warrants for other towns, you'll see, in fact, there are separate articles for that. And I realize that it sounds overly technical, but specifically in Massachusetts general laws, that's how we're supposed to do it. For whatever reason, East Bridgewater hasn't been doing it.
And we used to do it and it somehow fell off the warrant?
I don't know.
No.
Not lately.
Not since I've been on finance committee.
I went back several years and it has been for quite a while, um, put together.
So one of the crucial questions will be, when we have the article to set the salaries, should the salary for the town clerk be set at the appropriation amount, the sub-line item amount? Or should it be set up at a different amount? In that, for many people, obviously, not including, not just the elected officials, obviously, we had a little bit of discussion here earlier tonight. For many people, they didn't receive, the non-union employees who are not under contract and even those who are under contract or have letters of employment did not receive wage increases or salary increases from fiscal 25 to fiscal 26. So there is an actual decision for the board, for the town to make for fiscal 26, for setting the town clerk salary.
Even though we already approved the.
You approved the appropriation and there's nothing illegal about setting the salary to equal that. It's just a decision's going to have to be made at that town meeting.
I have a couple of questions, because I'm sorry, I just want to get clarity on this. So when any, if elected official, when they, because town clerk is different and our positions are different, any elected positions are different, right, when they present their budget to you, but it still goes through the same process as like, say, the DPW?
Yes.
Or, okay.
There's a, there's a budget for everybody.
So when this was presented at FinCom, was this, you know, was this in, did we have a discussion about this?
All I can tell you is it was included and the finance committee recommended it.
Oh, the, so the FinCom approved.
Yes, the budget that Katie had brought to them, including the 2% increase.
And I brought the budget for you guys to review what I submitted in January.
And it was approved?
Yes.
And then you're saying that that also needs to then go to get approved at, at town meeting or?
The, setting the salary needs to be approved.
Okay.
So I'll give you an example.
And that's not included in like, once we approve the overall budget?
No, because the problem is, again, when, if you look at the actual article that's brought to town meeting, there may be, for instance, in the select board budget, 25 sub-line items, but only three or four larger line items. Those are the amounts that are approved at town meeting. The sub-line items are within there, but we don't get it. If you look at the warrant, you won't see a sub-line item, for instance, for my salary. You won't see a sub-line item for the select board salaries. Everybody's salary is in one personnel line item.
But is, is our sal, so your, a town administrator's salary is a hired salary, correct? Right, you're not, you're not elected?
Correct.
And then ours is elected. Is there a difference between elected town salaries and non-elected town salaries?
Only that the town meeting sets the salaries for elected officials.
I know we do it.
I'm allowed to have it because I see it on the warrant.
Right. As, as, I'll give you an example.
I brought it just so you'd have. Sorry, I just.
So for instance, for DPW, we have a union. We have wage rates for those union members, people who work for the DPW. We don't approve those at town meeting. We approve an appropriation, but we're not, town meeting doesn't have the power to set those wage rates. It does have the power to set the appropriation, unlike elected officials, where specifically, under general laws, the town meeting has to set the salaries for elected officials, even if it's, you know, $500 for the moderator, for instance.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, yeah, so we're vote, we've, we approve the overall number at town meeting and then later it needs to be appropriated in who, in the department, each department appropriates it to those different positions, if that makes sense?
Well, what has happened is each department has brought to the finance committee a detailed budget. So, and again, you, I'll, I'll pick on DPW for a moment. There may be 20 people working for the DPW. John will bring in for them that, not that Joe is making this and Mary's making this and et cetera.
Okay.
It is simply an overall total amount that's being paid.
This is what I submitted.
But for the town clerk.
And that's what I submitted to FinCom.
Right. That hers is detailed to the point that there's a line item for her position. There's a line item, however, for several other positions in the office. It doesn't say how much money is going to each of those positions.
Right.
It doesn't, but because the town clerk's salary is listed as a separate sub-line item, it does show how much we're appropriating for the town clerk's sub-line item. But then town meeting doesn't vote on those individual sub-line items. It votes on the overall line item.
But FinCom is the one, they, FinCom approved this?
Yes.
FinCom amended it and then town meeting voted it.
Yes.
Right.
I don't know why, like, what is it we're talking about?
Yeah.
We just need to put an article on the special town meeting warrant to correct.
It will say moderator, 500, select board, whatever each of you get, board of health, what each of you get, board of assessors, what each of them get, and then town clerk, what the town clerk positions.
And then going forward, that'll just be in.
Well, it was a separate article.
On the annual town meeting warrant.
Right.
So, I mean, I understood what you're doing there. My question though is, so have we been out of order, so to speak, for all this time?
A couple of years.
Yes.
Perfect.
I bet, though, and I haven't looked back far enough, but prior to, are you even me being on finance committee? The town budget used to be voted on in very detailed, like office supplies, training, and at that point, the salaries probably were dated as a line item.
I swear, I remember it being a separate line item.
Nightmare to do it.
Right, 100%.
So this is, you know, this is how it's been.
Right.
For a long time now, but that, that could have been when it.
Maybe.
Right, so my town meetings get muddled because I have Carver in East Bridgewater and I know in Carver, they vote it separate.
Yeah.
They have a line item for elected official salaries.
So by all means, this is done the correct way. Every position has done it the correct way and going to FinCom and giving a similar breakdown. It's just at town meeting, we're not giving the entire, we're, we're now from going forward, we'll be presenting every single salary.
No.
No.
Just elective.
Just elective.
Okay, all right, so it covers not just.
You've been getting paid, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Not my increase, though. Because my increase.
So it'll have to be retroactive after it goes.
Question, and I guess I kind of want to talk about that, too, like how that kind of came about. Because I definitely was under the impression, based on like the email exchange, that I had done something wrong and I did a lot of work to like prove that I did it exactly how it's been done previously and that I didn't sneak something into my budget. And I was very upfront with my budget and prepared to discuss my budget if it was asked, which it wasn't asked of me at the time.
Asked by who? The finance?
The finance committee, which is okay. I, I had, I was prepared to discuss the 2% raise and why I felt the position deserved it and why I wanted to advocate for the town clerk position because in East Bridgewater, it's underpaid and it has been for a while now. And it's not something that I can talk with about, to you guys about, but having this kind of, I did that in January, I followed up with emails, I then went to FinCom and then getting an email from Rebecca in July, we, no. Yeah, July 7th, to like discuss this here in an open forum. I just feel like it was kind of handled, not as well as it could have been handled. And I know it's caused me a lot of stress for the like, the last three months because I wasn't able to make your meetings because I had scheduled school and then scheduled vacation time as well. So I just wanted to be very clear with you guys that that is what I submitted in January. I was very upfront with people about the 2% increase. I had, I'm fully prepared to discuss it. I know you guys are not the right place to do that. But I guess I would want, I don't know, I'm not sure.
No, I think, I, I don't think that this is an individual's issue. I think that this is a town issue. I think if we're saying we've been, like, you know, Peter asking, okay, so we've been doing this for years and not, you know, doing this individualized, I think, you know, bringing this forward is important because we need to understand that if that's how it should be done, that it should be, but it's not, you know, you've done the necessary steps in order to get to this, you know? You've done, you did what you're supposed to do, which is go to FinCom and bring it to the town and, and I think that that is important. I think also Charlie was stating that having an individual's articles is also important. I think this is a catch that is necessary for the town to do because it should be. We should see exactly how much our elected officials are making. I mean, I can look up my, I can look up people's salary on see-through for the state, so it's, it is necessary. But I think, you know, your due diligence was done and, and your process is correct and it sounds like it's, this is how it has been done with prior, every other prior elected? Okay, so I was going to say, quote me if I'm wrong, I want to please correct me if I'm wrong, but, but yeah, I guess that's.
Yeah, I would just go back on the FinCom situation. I mean, you know, knowing the group of individuals there, especially Dave, I think if they had any questions or they had concerns regarding, you know, any increases or things of that nature, that would have definitely been brought to your attention, you know? I don't think it was overpassed by them just not to understand that, so I don't think it's, I don't think it has anything to do with that. I mean, they're pretty, you know, they go pretty in depth. I mean, you know, obviously, Melanie can tell you that. They're pretty, I mean, I sat in the board of health and one of the things I hated to do was go into the FinCom and discuss a budget with them. But that being said, yeah, if we have to go through this procedure, it seems fairly, fairly clear, right, Charlie?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've already, I've already had the article written up.
Okay.
I've given it to Rebecca to, at least as a draft for moving forward the warrant.
Great.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sure this feels awkward for you and I get that.
Very.
In a public setting.
Yep.
But for the purposes of this board, everything has to be done in public.
Yeah, and I'm fully.
Conversation like that, if it happened.
Open to having.
Between like you and Charlie and then Charlie told us, like, that would be worse for us at town meeting to have it come out that way. So even though it feels, just like, like we have to do Charlie's performance review in a public setting, like it's, some of the stuff, some of the rules that protect people to know everything that's going on are silly and, you know, and I'm sorry that it's been stressful for you because that certainly isn't anything I would ever want to see you go through, but we'll, we'll, we'll make it right and then going forward, it'll be done in the way that is expected. Thank you.
Do you want to talk at all about the election?
Oh, is there an election?
There is, a special town election, November 15th, and I think as of today, I got the final okay that we can do the postcards. There was like a slight little snafu.
Might want to tell them what the postcard is.
Yes, the postcard is the, we're moving the, the.
Yeah, right.
To the middle school.
Yep.
There was a slight, a slight snafu in that the state wanted us to change the postcard a little bit, so it's changed and we went through town council, so we're all set and we'll be able to hopefully get it. I'm sending it to the printer tomorrow morning and they said it's five to seven days, it'll be in people's mailboxes. So it'll be pretty fast and it'll have, as well as our upcoming elections, it will be taking place at the Gordon Mitchell School, which is again, just the town elections. State and federal elections will still be at the junior, senior high school and that's simply for volume because there's a much larger turnout.
And also because the school keeps having events on Saturdays.
And that's why we moved it, yes, so that we will not have that issue and, and it, I think it'll be a really, although it will be confusing at first and we're going to try our best to make sure that we work with all the different agencies in town and make sure all the signs tell people where they're going to go. I'm sure there will still be confusion and I'm anticipating still getting yelled at and that's okay. I understand.
Where your Teflon soup.
We can't, we can't, we can't make everybody happy, right?
I really cannot. I really like to try, but it just doesn't.
We've had a night up here, so.
You know, I was not looking forward to.
I do have some questions.
Yes, please.
Regarding the November 15th election, oh, we, the November 15th election will be in regards to a debt exclusion for the Central Elementary School project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that election will happen regardless of what vote is, is, is given at the annual town meeting?
Correct.
Okay, and the date for the annual town meeting?
Special town meeting.
Special, annual, sorry, special town meeting, corrections, special town meeting, I want to make sure, is, can we just have that date clarified as well?
Yes, absolutely. It's November 10th.
Okay, so November 10th is the special town meeting for the Central Elementary School project?
Yes.
Regardless of what that vote is on that date, we will be having an election on the 15th of November?
Correct.
And that election will be held where?
That will be at the Gordon Mitchell School, Middle School.
Sorry, I have to ask this because I've had so many people come up to me and ask and I was like, let me get this clear on the record so everybody knows.
Absolutely.
So I think that that's, and the postcard, when will the postcard be hitting people, you say?
It should be in five to seven business days.
Okay.
Is what they told me on the phone. And yeah, it should be pretty fast.
Okay.
And everybody that is a registered voter will be getting that.
Okay.
Per household or per individual registered voter?
I think it's actually per, it's, and I shouldn't say I think, it is per registered voter.
Okay.
So a couple of households will get multiple.
Right, okay.
Well, they don't share their mail with each other.
Yeah, a lot of times they don't.
Federal offense.
Federal, yeah, federal offense.
No, it is a postcard.
Yep. No, thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and then we have our meeting on October, our next, October 27th? When is our special town meeting?
Yes, that's the potpourri meeting.
The potpourri, okay. Yes.
Good. Melanie, you got anything?
No, I was just in case, in case any questions came up about the budget process and everything, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Peter, if I could quickly make a comment, I think that problem probably got initiated when the town adopted the omnibus budget voting at town meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because we did use.
Oh, so it's Noble's vote.
Yeah, right.
We did use to vote the individual salaries, elected town officials.
Okay.
As a table, you know, a tabular form.
Yep.
There's names in it.
Okay.
When was that passed?
During.
Covid, it was Covid. It was like, it was 20.
I, I know originally.
I think we did the, the big thing in 2019 and then in 2020, we went to that consent budget.
Yeah, for, for years, there was a separate table with the salaries for a liquid.
Yeah, they had them all.
Because I was one of those for a while.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I think it's important.
So that tracks.
I think it got lost when we went to the, voted the whole financial thing, it went one whack.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll tell them.
Let them know.
Yeah, next meeting.
I'll tell them at the MMA conference.
All right, thanks, Roy, appreciate that. Let's move on. Seven o'clock, which is actually.
Seven ten.
Seven ten. The appointment of the beautification committee members, do we have any beautification members here with us this evening?
I believe we have one.
One? Oh, come on out, yeah, absolutely, yes, something we can actually enjoy.
This is great.
What up?
Don't buy it as much as we're feeling.
There's no, there are no booby traps right now.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through the, all the members, but since you're here, why don't you tell us who you are, where you're from, and what your reason for wanting to be on the beautification committee?
Thank you, I'm Faith Diver. I live at two eighty-two Whitman Street, next to Mistletoe Acres, and I've lived in this town for over ten years, and I just heard about this committee. I was, sent the email by a friend. I love gardening. I was a creative director for corporate companies for many years, so I do design work. And, yeah, it just got me really excited to like make this town that I call home more beautiful in the ways that I can.
You want the bicycle out front with the flowers?
I do!
I was gonna say.
Yeah, see, we've all seen it.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's exact, yeah, this is, I think, Carol, I wanna let you speak first.
No, no, defer to Peter.
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, no, I think that's great, and maybe we can have you come, the beautification committee, come and talk to Kiwanis. Maybe there are ways we can partner with them too, because we have money and you have people.
Amazing!
Yeah, I think that this is one of the first things, I remember Carol and me, we had a meeting, and it was one of the first.
Before she was elected.
Yeah, before I was elected, yes, for the record, and it was one of the things that Carol had brought up, and it, and when it was brought in front of us, I think it was a student from the high school wrote us, right? I think it's an amazing idea. I think we need people like yourself to bring, you know, we bring the ideas, and obviously, we're just public employers, we can't really give all the best creative ideas, so having this committee is perfect for that. And then, you know, I would recommend definitely reaching out to local, you know, groups, whether that be the Kiwanis or Lyons, or, you know, different groups around town that, you know, their commercial club, different, you know, groups, because I think a lot of people have really thought about wanting to better and beautify the community. It's just, you know, it, that unfortunately does cost money, but I know that there are groups out there that are wanting to partner and really make this happen, so definitely recommend that, and also, if you ever have questions, never hesitate to reach out to us either. And you obviously do a phenomenal job, if the three of us can recommend, can see you doing it, so, where this is exciting, so, yeah, that's good.
Charlie, we're gonna make a motion for this, this committee, or?
Well, you're gonna make a motion to appoint members for.
Okay.
Yeah, no designated term.
Okay.
It's a life.
Yeah, I don't know if you want.
Be aware when it says no designated term.
Eventually, let's get together.
Well, at some point, I think we're gonna want them to come back, because what I'll do is, once we make the appointments, I'll provide some more information about beautification committees in other communities, in the sense of, they're gonna wanna come back to you and say, we've talked among ourselves, we, here's a game plan that we'd like to follow, things we're interested in trying to do or accomplish, and then, you know, and, you know, maybe you have ideas of, as you just mentioned, about groups to reach out to for support. They may wanna get a small budget together, fiscal twenty-seven budget, I'm not talking noodles and noodles, but in terms of what they wanna do, a little money goes a long way.
And they'd be subject to all open meeting law, things, posted meetings and all that?
And once, you know, they'll get that, Katie will provide them all that information.
So you wanna make, do you want me to make the motion to appoint?
Please.
Okay, I'll make a motion, a motion to appoint the beautification committee members, Jennifer Cullen, Stacy Chen, Faith Diver, Catherine Stanfer, for the terms of September eighth, twenty twenty-five, and there is no, no designated term.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any further discussion? You got any of this, is anybody in the audience here for the beautification? Roy, you here for beautification? No? All right, seeing that there's no one else, the motion is made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for stepping up.
Yeah, I'm so happy to. So how do I find out about, like, where are we gathering and when?
Well, that's, you, this is where, thankfully, Katie can correct me. Legally, the, the members can discuss via email, a time and place to meet and an agenda. You don't get into a discussion about what's on the agenda, where you can talk to each other on phone or on emails and say, hey, when are you available? When are you available? Let, let's get a space here at Town Hall. Let's put a list of things we wanna talk about. All that is legal. You can't talk about the things you wanna talk about, but you can talk about those things.
Meeting place and time.
And the list of items to be discussed. So what we'll do through our office is get the five of you in communication with each other, and you're all gonna take it from there. You'll get letters saying, hey, get sworn into Katie's office, get the committee packets at Katie's office, so you have ethics, you'll have open meeting law information and such. And then, if you need help, you can call any of the three of us, and we'll.
So those phone numbers and emails Faith can get from?
Well, all of them are gonna get from everybody else. I don't, I think you're asking.
I don't. I know, I know Katie Stanfer. She actually, she's my gardener, so.
I, I don't wanna ask Faith to be the point person for this. They'll work that out among themselves. But everybody will get everybody else's contact information.
And we'll send it out, for sure.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, it's worked out perfect. It's seven fifteen.
Look at that, we're on time.
Right, that's great. So seventeen.
Maybe a couple more chairs up at the table, where the crowd is coming.
Yeah, right. This is a discussion, a seven fifteen discussion of foreclosure procedures and associated decisions for two seventy-nine Pine Street.
And I think it also probably will help reflect as to might, if we run into situations like this in the future, how we should be handling this. This has been a long time since we've done foreclosure before here.
Sure.
But the board may or may not know who you are.
Yeah, you gotta just.
I, my name is David Coppola. I'm an attorney, and I represent, my office represents the treasurer collector's office in the litigation and collection of unpaid real estate taxes for the town.
Megan, I'm the treasurer collector for the town.
Thank you. All right, so, go ahead.
Sure, so the, the reason that we're here today is because the town recently foreclosed on a piece of property, two seventy-nine Pine Street, and within the last year, the laws have recently changed as far as the town's responsibility in handling foreclosed properties. And in the past, the town, once they foreclosed, they owned the property outright, and there was no obligation to sell the property within a certain period of time. They could just hold on to it, and then later down the road, if they decided to do something with it, they could, whether municipal use or sell. Now, the town is under an obligation to make a decision within the first sixty days after the town becomes the owner, whether it's going to decide to sell the property or retain the property for municipal purposes. And one of the objectives in doing that is the change in the law requires the town now to return any excess surplus, over and above what the town is owed in taxes, to the former owner based on their decision. So if the town decides to sell it, they must put it on the market within six months with a Realtor, and if it's sold for over and above what is owed to the town, then that money goes back to the former owner. If the town decides to retain the property, they need to obtain an appraisal of the property, which will determine the fair market value, and then the amount that's owed to the town is taken out of the appraised value, and if there's anything over and above, that is paid out of the town's funds to the former owner. And all of these, this new procedure requires the town to take somewhat immediate action. So the, the town became the owner of this property on August twenty-seventh. So the clock is now ticking, the sixty-day clock is now ticking for the town to make a decision whether it's going to sell the property or retain it. And once that is done, the town then needs to notify the former owner of, of their decision within that sixty-day period. So as of right now, the town essentially has until October twenty-sixth to make that decision and notify the former owner of its decision.
And I'm assuming the board is, is the determining factor of what we do with this piece of property, with obviously input from the department head?
Yes, because it is town-owned property now, it's within the care, custody, and control of the select board, so they have the ultimate decision as to its disposition.
Is the, is the house vacant currently? Are we, are we, are we gonna throw out of there? I mean, what's?
I, I believe it is occupied.
Oh, really?
All indication is, is that it is occupied. My office handled the, the foreclosure action, and we did have communication with the, with the former owner, and we believe that she's still, she's still living there.
Great. You had to come tonight, right? Have we ever had an incident, does anyone, Charlie, do you know like this before?
Well, in fact, that's what, while I was in Halifax, I don't think we ever reached the foreclosure point, at least, at least with a property that we had a house on. The, but I did talk to David to figure out, do we have obligations?
Right.
Through that process, and my understanding is that we don't. There may be other circumstances where we would, but we don't in this case. It's a, unfortunately, it's a very, setting aside anything else, it's a very difficult situation, which I'm not gonna go into detail here.
Yeah, great, fair enough. All right, Carol.
I, I mean, I, we're not, this, I feel like this is sort of, I don't wanna say above our pay grade, but like, we're not the experts here, like, you're an expert.
Right.
Well, I would think, given, we're talking a house lot of.
I mean, there's somebody living there, huh?
The lot itself is how, how large?
I don't, the house lot is. It is about seventy-two hundred square feet.
So we don't have any municipal purpose that we would have.
No, I wouldn't think so.
So my recommendation to the board, in fact, it may be helpful to the person living there.
Would be to sell it.
Is that we sell it.
Right.
Obviously, we recap whatever, we coop whatever taxes are owed and such, and then the residual goes to the past owner. And that person may find a need for the money.
Is the person that's living there the owner?
Pardon?
Is the person that's living there the owner?
The, yes, she is the former owner.
Yeah, I mean, the second, oh, Paul, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question. David, who's responsible for, can she still be there when we do the foreclosure auction? Or do we have to do the council and get off, get the occupant out?
So the, the property can be sold as, with it occupied.
Yeah.
It, it. It, it's listed with a Realtor now instead of an auction process.
She's trying to sell the person?
No, no, no.
No.
No, that's what David's saying is, when we, we have it, and this is all new, this, what David was telling you, normally, we wouldn't have, this is new over the past year and a half or so, but, yeah.
What would you do in the past, Paula? I mean, what would be the process in a situation like this?
Just, just hang on to it, like, we've hung on to everything for a long time, like, but now this, now the, now the clock's ticking, the state's saying, and the excess has to go back where it didn't have to.
And if we don't sell it, we, that, we ourselves have to.
Well, that, that option being sound very easy, right.
Have to buy funds if we're holding on to it.
Right.
We don't have any interest really in doing.
Right, and it's a process, I'm sure that process is as well.
There's been auctions before where the banks take the house for a mortgage.
Right.
And then they sell it at auction, or they sell it to a Realtor, and you buy it with the person in it. That's your obligation. That's your risk you take when you purchase this property, and then you have to, as the new owner, get the guy out, or the woman out, or the people.
If you wanna take it.
Sounds a little cals, but.
Well, that's even a better question. We, we, we auction this off, and then nobody shows up because of the circumstance.
I think as David said, we're not actually auctioning at all.
No.
We would, the town would be obligated, if they decide to sell it, list it with a licensed Realtor.
Okay.
Broker. And then, you know, you.
Will it take forever? I mean, is no time limit?
We only have sixty days.
Well, you have, once you make the decision, you have essentially six months to list it with a Realtor.
Oh, okay.
So it, everything needs to happen fairly quickly, and it, it certainly can be sold with it occupied. There are certain, you know, considerations that the town may wanna take into account, whether they're deciding to sell it occupied or unoccupied, but it certainly can be done.
Yeah, I mean, like Charlie said, I mean, well, now here's a recommendation, I don't see any other.
No.
Me personally don't see any other.
You have to sell it.
Right, process that we could go through.
Option one to sell, but, and occupy, you know, is there something that the town can have where we, we're selling it with an occupant, if we're selling it with an occupant, does the town have to say, you know, this occupant needs to be out by this sale date? Like, how does that work? Just to give them, I don't know, because say we have a sale date, and they're still in the, the, the home, you're saying any excess income that comes from selling that house would have to go back to that owner? So then that owner would be able to then purchase, you know, go and get an apartment or, or, or lease something. Does that make sense?
Maybe, depending on what the, what the.
Their, their financial situation, but at least it gives them the ability to, because of state law, we aren't, we are not able to collect any more than, you know.
What is due to us.
So that residual money could, would go back to the previous owner, and then they would be able to say, you know, find something, you know, I know that there are programs that, if they're working with, you know, any local neighbor work, housing solutions, anything like that, to give them maybe raft for X amount of months, and then be able to take that residual. I'm just trying to think about the occupant, but also think about the town here. I don't know if that's, does that make sense?
There's a lot of other factors we don't know. The mortgage, I mean, who knows? It could be, you know, it could be a ton of things that are going on with that property that, you know.
Right, so tonight's decision, do we have to make a decision or is it a decision question?
Well, I would think so.
Well, you're gonna have to, the clock's running, you don't think.
Right, and decision.
You have until October twenty-seventh, you said?
Twenty-six, yep.
And by that date, what needs to happen?
It, the town needs to make a decision and notify the former owner of its decision.
Okay, so we would probably wanna give them notice sooner than rather than later, so a good decision would definitely.
Right, so you're gonna have to make a motion for that.
Oh, no.
No, no, you're the clerk.
So what, what is the exact wording I should use on this?
It would be a motion by the town to retain or sell the property located at two seventy-nine Pine Street.
So the motion is that to do one or the other?
The motion is to sell.
Yes.
Just to sell.
To sell. Motion, motion to sell.
So do we need to first make a motion to?
Just to sell it?
No, we're just.
Just to sell it, right, okay. Okay.
Who finds the Realtor?
It would be the town that, that would.
Megan's off?
Yes, solicit bids for a Realtor.
Do you have a template?
Yes.
So those, those bids, the, the town's responsibility to find a Realtor, would that be covered by any residual?
Those would be.
The, the fees, you're talking about the fees.
The fees.
Yes.
That would be covered?
The expense of selling the property would be, would be accounted for what the town is owed once the property is sold.
Okay, so we, it would not be our responsibility?
So there's no financial.
No.
Okay, so we would be reimbursed for any fees?
Take whatever percentages that they make off of what the sale is.
Okay.
They also need a writ of the law that's written, it has, the property has to be appraised. That's if we were retaining. And that's another. Is that if we are retaining it? We need to be appraised? The wording, it looks like it had to have an appraisal done to have the value kind of established, not just the assessment of an individual. This, this house, I think, has a tree, doesn't it? So it's, it might be assessed at this, but we, as the assessor, we don't, we haven't been inside, we don't know the condition of it, so you act, want an actual value as of a certain date, and then, then the Realtor does a market analysis, I guess, or whatever, but those fees come out of the, the fees of the sale.
The, the costs and fees associated with the sale would be paid out of the proceeds, and the town would be able to take that.
Okay, okay.
Megan, you might have to increase your tax title, because this is new. This is gonna continue every time we, this happens.
Yeah.
The decision needs to be made, and then this, it's an outlay a little bit before it actually sells.
Foreclosing on too many.
But people will buy, buy, they'll probably sell it, because it will be low, and they just, a chance to get in the market nowadays is, you know.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion.
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion that, but I make a motion for the town of East Bridgewater to sell the property located at two seventy-nine Pine Street.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any further discussion? Two seventy-nine Pine. Anyone? Yuler? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ted?
What happens when the appraiser goes back and says the property has no value?
That's right, a minute ago, right.
Well, it's, it's only two hundred square feet, it probably.
It's just the land, I would assume.
You could hear, they could take the house.
Yeah, not per acre. Grab something, I guess. Cross that bridge when you get to it, Roy. Hopefully, you wanna get to it. Oh, is it that small, really?
Roy, I live on one-tenth of an acre.
You live in a city.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe you can put a house on that, great value nowadays.
Well, that's true.
Maybe the neighbor will buy it. Is your neighbor, hopefully? Somebody in butter, like, your neighbor in that?
Maybe Mr. Mitchell.
There's a butter either side.
Yeah, maybe they'll.
Yeah, there's a butter pole on the, on the east.
A small amount, maybe they.
All right.
Thank you.
That's it for, for appointments. Must've missed something. I don't think so.
Perfect. Do you want me to take?
Well, yeah.
We're done with our, we're done with our appointments. All right, so, we're gonna take-
Action items.
Take action items nine and ten out of order.
We have Megan's here and be the person who would want to discuss this with you.
Yeah, you can have nine and ten while they're here, yeah.
You're the one who would want to discuss or be here for nine and ten?
Nine and ten first, yeah, come back, go.
So, action item number nine, discuss the collector certification for Assistant Treasurer Collector Carrie Tu, correct?
Tuig.
Tuig. And treasurer certification for Treasurer Collector Megan Crosby.
So, we both passed our, um, we're-
Congratulations.
This is, this is not a slam dunk exam. It's not, you show up and sign your name.
Right.
There are people who have failed this exam this summer, so.
That's awesome.
Yes, so, it's not, I think, um, they talked how, like, sixty percent typically doesn't pass, so, I felt pretty good.
They're both good.
A lot of anxiety going in, but we both passed, so, we're very excited.
That's awesome. What a relief.
Yeah. Now, we're on to the next one. So, she's gonna start the treasurer track and I'll start the collector track next year, and it's a three-year par, process, because you have to take certain classes in order to sit for the exam.
Yep.
So, once we complete that, so, three years from now, hopefully, we'll both be certified in each collector and treasurer.
That's great.
So, both of them are gonna now be eligible for various stipends, either under the general laws or under our letter of employment. Um, we're gonna retroactive those to July first because they're, they are per year, um, stipends.
Yep.
Um, so that we'll have increases in their line, uh, their pay for this year, based on all the hard work that they've done.
Yeah. I think, I think that that's a perfect, and I just want to say something, I know we were speaking in our one-on-one on this, but this is a perfect example of something we've talked about, which is, you know, bettering yourself to, to better your department, to better your town. And I said, I, I'm gonna have John Haynes, like, a quote of that on a notebook, but every time he says that, it, I think that is a perfect example of people that we want to make sure we're retaining you and staying here, and the fact that you have both done this due diligence and doing that is huge, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, keeping you here is so important, and I think that you're really investing in yourself, and it's helping us too, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, great. I mean, you know, we, we put you in that seat for a reason, right? We were really confident when you guys were coming in, right?
Yeah.
Me and David talked about it, like, we thought it was time to get someone that had come up from the ranks, and, you know, you both have, uh, done a great job, and we appreciate the work you're putting in.
Thank you.
Yeah, very proud of you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
There's no action needed, but we did want to-
Okay.
Good to get the-
So-
This is the good public recognition.
Right. This is what you want.
We need to, we need to take a moment on that. But, um, okay, action item number ten, discuss and vote to approve requests from Treasurer Collector Megan Crosby for disclosure of financial interests as required under general law C twenty-six eight A and nineteen, and, and to make a determination as the, as the appointing authority.
So, my husband works for the town. He works on the DPW, um, fleet maintenance. So, just where I essentially sign the checks, there's a financial interest, and honestly, I didn't think about this until I went to school and a former treasurer, I was talking to him, and she was like, how's the family? I go, my husband works at the DPW, and she was like, oh, did you file anything with ethics? I was like, no, should I have? So, instant anxiety, came back, talked to Charlie, and-
Getting a financial disclosure.
Yeah.
Yes.
And again, one of the things I want to emphasize, or maybe two, one is, there wasn't anything nefarious being done.
Right.
Number two is that Megan did the right thing about calling the State Ethics Commission. They are very friendly with people who want to find out how to do the right thing. And they will work with you and provide you with the direction so that, in fact, everything will be done as it should be, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Great. We don't have to do anything as far as-
Well, you are gonna have to approve what she's asking you to do.
Approve a disclosure, for her to get a disclosure. Okay. Um, so, do I make the motion again? Okay, make a motion to vote, uh, to approve the request from the Treasurer Collector Megan Crosby for disclosure of financial interests as required under general law C twenty-six eight A and nineteen, um, or section nineteen, and to make a determination as the appointing authority.
And all the details are in the disclosure about what she can and cannot do.
Okay.
And one of the things I want to point out is, as much as the treasurer's collector does have her signature on the checks, that person does not make the determination as to how much those checks are going to be for. Okay? All those payroll information for everybody in town goes through the town accountant's office. That office approves the warrants and bills and payroll that then are submitted to the treasurer collector's office, who then cuts the checks. But it's not a situ, uh, situation where the treasurer collector's office just willy-nilly says, oh, you have a thousand, you have a thousand, you have a thousand. They don't get to do that, and it didn't happen in this case.
Right.
Uh, second.
All right, motion made second. Any further discussion?
You're like Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood, people in the neighborhood.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Back to the top.
Um, make a motion to approve the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five select board meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Hearing none on favor?
Aye.
Um, confirm the receipt of proposed zoning articles from the planning board for the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting B two and B three zones, and ask the planning board to hold a required public hearing.
And Kevin and Roy are here on that. This is a procedural issue in that it seems very weird, but it's exactly what the AG has on their checklist of things. The planning board can make, come up with its own articles. They have, just like everybody else, they have to submit them to the select board for the warrant. Anytime the select board receives a zoning article where the planning board would have to have a public hearing, even though it's coming from the planning board, the select board then sends them back to the planning board and says, hey, hold the public hearing. So, that's what's happened tonight, but Kevin and Roy, if they want to talk about the specifics or they want to talk about logistics, they're here.
Come on, guys. Just, uh, just gonna state your name and address for the record.
So, Kevin Riley, uh, planning board chair, fifty-ninth Surrey Lane.
Roy Gardner, planning board vice chair, twenty-seventh Grove Street.
All right.
So, this is basically something that Roy has been heavily involved with. There were some properties, there are some properties that have come before us that were approved for development that have not been developed because the issue of tenancies. Uh, strictly commercial properties are, you know, having some struggles. So, the idea being, uh, and Roy's put these things together, and I'll let him speak more to it, but the idea is that in the B two and B three zones, which are along the, sort of, the main trafficked roads in East Bridgewater, that this would allow residential over commercial so that landlords, owners can hopefully have a better, uh, ability to make a buck off, you know, rentals and so forth, so, Roy, whatever.
Yeah, so, some quick background. The state first adopted the term mixed-use zoning in, I believe it was two thousand and one, for what's called the forty R programs, which are commercial districts which have user-friendly permits issued to the town, similar to forty B. When COVID hit, the state legislature adopted the mixed-use terminology in forty A, which is the zoning act, uh, with the idea that they already knew that there was a serious issue with some of the, the office space type buildings all along the, the various roads. Not so much in the cities, because most of the city programs go under forty R. In any case, I started looking at that several years ago, and we've had at least three queries in the last two years, maybe three years, asking about that, including an approved special permit for a building that was gonna go in opposite the gas station at twenty-seven and fourteen. Now, the, the problem that owner had and the problem that several other owners have, including the owner of the former Compass Medical Building, was that we don't have any zoning in town that would allow them to do that yet. So, that's how those two articles started. One of those articles was intended to be on annual town meeting, but due to a clerical error, it didn't get on. We had the hearings, we had the, the vote, we had the recommendation, but it missed the annual town meeting warrant.
The previous annual town that was-
This, this spring.
Yes. So, what we've done is, is, we've already had, the, the two ads have already run.
Okay.
The hearings are next Monday night. The plan would be to now add in, we did adopt mixed-use zoning in downtown shortly after the town had the, the sewer system, or the municipal wastewater treatment plant that was part of the high school project, because we knew that downtown couldn't really do that kind of development without municipal wastewater treatment. Uh, so, there are potential issues with the ground capacity to take Title Five systems in, in East Bridgewater with, with multi-unit residential buildings on the second floor of these, but, but that issue really belongs to the Board of Health. If they can't support it, they can't support it.
Right.
That's really outside the purview of the planning board, but the, the planning board recognizes that there's multiple buildings along those roads where they're boned, uh, zoned either business two or business three, they could really use the financial assistance of residential housing on the second floor, i.e. mixed-use, two mixed-use. Commercial first floor residential housing, second floor. And I know there's some confusion among other parties in town about what that means. There is no confusion if you read the state law. It's defined right in state law. Definition is now in chapter forty-eight. There's residential use, which includes apartments, apartment building and condominiums. There's business and industrial uses, which fall under the commercial umbrella. And there's a mixed-use, which by definition, right in state law, is industrial and/or commercial business with residential housing on the second floor and up. In our town, it would only be second floor, because we don't allow anything higher than, than two full stories, but.
And the thing, too, that, you know, sort of, we're looking to, to be a little bit proactive to, uh, rather than have folks coming in on an, sort of, an ad hoc, individualized basis to try to, you know, get approvals, to get, you know, these, these kinds of things on certain properties, taking a broader picture and saying, okay, these zones are appropriate for this type of use.
Yeah, the, the problem we have right now in town is the town of East Bridgewater doesn't allow use variances. Mixed, mixed-use building is an actual use type, which we don't currently have in our bylaw for those zones.
Could I ask a question that maybe the people at home would-
Certainly.
You know, can, be able to compare this to. Now, you're saying the bottom, the bottom floor would be, like, business, um, industrial use, and the second floor would be residential?
Well, so, so far, only business uses, because we haven't, we haven't gone forward in, in-
Okay.
Tried to add that to the industrial zone?
All right, so, just businesses on the bottom. So, I've seen plenty of those and something to compare to, maybe, I don't know if you'd be able to speak to this, um, but like, for example, Whitman Center, they've done-
Yeah, exactly. I was just gonna say that.
I was gonna say, Whitman Center has done a great job at, um, you know, they've made the, the entire top floors residential, and, um, the bottom floors are, um, businesses. I think that that's something, especially in a downtown, is a smart way to make that transition, and-
If you get the right uses on the first floor, you've got a built-in audience, you know, up above you to, to patronize your facilities.
I think that, that happened shortly after Whitman expanded their, their municipal wastewater, uh-
Yeah.
Uh, agreement with the city of Brockton and, and so did the downtown area in Brockton. That then gave them the ability to do that.
Yeah, I think it's something that a lot of people get confused, and maybe it sounds really scary when you say it, but then if you compare it to the Whitman downtown, and I know my grandmother's been a resident of Whitman for over fifty years, and that's been one of the best things for Whitman. Um, but to be able to see something like that in East Bridgewater would be something important. Um, so, you, this, tonight, we're just confirming, um, this proposal, you're saying, and then have a public-
Well, you, you receive the proposals from the planning board. Under the AG's checklist, once you receive proposals, whether it was from the planning board or anybody else, there are zoning articles for a town meeting that then the planning board's gonna have to have a hearing, you just immediately send them back to the planning board so that they can have the hearing. But there has to be a record of these steps.
Process, in the process. Okay.
I, I think the other thing is that allows the town to, to have those buildings assessed for more than they're assessed for now. It also creates what should be some more affordable housing units in the town of which we're desperately short of.
Sure.
As, now, when that change is made, that zoning change, will there be an assessment that has to be made?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because they, they'll have to pull some significant building permits to renovate the building.
Okay.
The owner that has a standing special permit for the building down that he hasn't built yet at the intersection of fourteen and twenty-seven will have to come back to the planning board to get his special permit modified.
Okay. Perfect. That's all the questions I have.
Yeah.
No, I'm good. Thank you for the explanation. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, especially in this time where, you know, you got seen it, where people just can't get those commercial usages that they used to be able to get, so it definitely makes sense. There, I mean, there's gonna be some, you know, some, some issues with, like you, Roy, you pointed out with septic systems and things of that nature, but, you know, at least it's a step to see if there's an option.
An opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Appreciate it. Okay, good. Uh, do we need an emotion back to them, or is it just?
It's a motion to send these articles to the planning board so they can hold the public hearing that's required.
So, make a motion to confirm the receipt of proposed zoning articles from the planning board for the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting B two and B three zones, and ask the planning board to hold a required public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you waiting around, too, there.
Well, it's interesting.
It was.
Popular board tonight.
You really did pick the room.
You picked a good night.
Thank you and good night.
You had to pay more for the seat here than that.
Intriguing, tell them.
Make a motion, uh, or Central School Project Town Meeting and Town Election.
Right. So, in fact, we still have time and, um, the, we're proposing having the election, obviously, on the, on November fifteenth for the school project. Um, the wording of the article, motion, and ballot question, which is the election question, are being reviewed by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's been reviewed by town, um, by bond council or bond advisors, so it's with the MSBA to make sure the wording. The board, I'll bring this back to the board on the twenty-second, but we're gonna have to make a decision no later. Well, the board could hold another meeting, but the aim is to get these decisions made on the twenty-second. So, there's not, there's nothing else we need to do with that item at this point.
Um, approve the request from Police Chief Michael Jenkins to surplus and donate the following items to Randolph Police Department for portable truck scales.
Right. They used to have a officer who was qualified to do the, you know, truck scales, but, you know, do the weighing of the trucks and make sure they weren't overloaded. That officer is no longer serving. There's nobody, according to Michael, who is interested in doing that sort of work. However, they have somebody in Randolph, um, so he's asking that the scales be declared surplus, and then he, um, shipped to Randolph.
Okay.
And that's, we don't have to go out to bed or anything like that. We're doing it from one town to another.
Okay. All right, I'll call that a motion.
Second.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
But in the other hand, we're not sending the, uh, two HPs to Randolph.
Randolph wants those too.
Approve the request by Ryan McGonigal, McGon, McGonigal?
McGonigal.
Um, Director of Information Technology to surplus the following items as the equipment is no longer functional due to age or damage. HP, page one.
As printed.
As printed. Thank God.
Motion made second. Uh, any further discussion? Ryan, you, nothing, right? Capolo pieces of equipment. All right. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve the event permit and one-day liquor application from Kevin Lassley.
Ryan, we'll be open in a second a little while.
Of the East Bridgewater Commercial Club located at One Nielsen Avenue for a Chili Chowder Festival event on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from twelve to six P.M.
Second.
Mostly made second. Any further discussion or any discussions? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the event permit for the Board of Health for the Annual Community Vaccine Clinic at the Council on Aging, three fifty-five Plymouth Street, on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M.
Second.
Mostly made second. Discussion. Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the event permit from Patricia Trumbly of the Kiwanis Club of East Bridgewater for the lighting of the common on December fourth, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty to seven P.M.
Can we talk about events three months in advance?
Second.
What?
Yeah, right.
Can we talk about events three months in advance? Why are we doing December? It's still summer.
Well, because usually we do it after the event happens.
Because it's better this than doing it after it's already happened. We go, "Yeah, let's get rid of the duds of last week."
This is a good thing for government to do things early.
Oh, you said no. All right. Mostly made second. Any further discussion? Any discussions? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss collector certification.
We did.
No, good.
Nine ten.
Discuss and vote to support House Bill twenty-four thirty-two, an act to reduce incidents in death from pancreatic cancer.
Second.
Kelly?
Um, you had some background materials that were sent along. Obviously, I think it's a worthy cause and reason for if we can get more progress on working together at the state level with biotech and everybody else in here in Massachusetts to see what we can do about improving outcomes for those who suffer from pancreatic cancer. I think in many cases, we all know somebody who's gone through that. Sometimes people have done well, some people have not. We'd like to see more people do well, and I think this bill would help that.
Agreed.
Yeah, this is great. I mean, when I got the word from you guys from the office, you know, it was perfect timing. Charlie ran another road race, did a great job. They had an event this couple of weeks ago now, I guess, for a young lady in town, two weeks ago, to raise some money for her battle with pancreatic cancer. So, you know, this is just, this is great. And you know what? The other thing, too, is, I was going to talk about this. I'll do it right now. To see a town come together, I mean, five hundred people, just, you know, people that didn't even know this woman, I think. There's a lot that knew her, obviously. She's a very popular town. But, you know, to see them come together as a group and have the event that they did in such a short period of time was really fun.
And the thing is, you know, for something like the five K, sure, there are people like myself who are going to go out there and push our limits. For a lot of people, they were just there for the five K to walk it, which is great. I mean, everybody who participated, they showed up, they made, they did the three miles, three miles is three miles. It doesn't matter how fast you go.
Yeah, no, and the committee that put it together and the work that did it, Jen was involved quite a bit. It was an event. I've run a lot of events in my past, and this was done, like I said, I asked, "What can I do?" They said, "Nothing. We're all set."
And it was a family fun day. It wasn't just a five K. There were a lot of other activities going on. They had a big, I mean, how many donations they had received from organizations and restaurants and everybody else in the area? They had at least fifty, you know, groups, businesses that had made donations.
Yeah. Yeah, just makes you feel good for, you know, living in the town you do when something like this goes on.
We live in a town where people do come together to support someone when they're when they're in trouble or having, they have a need. It's a good thing to see.
Right. Mostly made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote on recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee. Church Street Fields Parking Complaints. The Traffic Advisory Committee recommends that the Department of Public Works install three to four no parking either side signs on both of the Church Street from the snack bar to the first residence, and that Little League be notified of the new restrictions and enforcement.
And as part of that, you'll approve the traffic regulations will list this area under the no parking allowed areas under the town's traffic rules and regulations.
Yeah, that's a terrible area for probably friends who live down in that neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Can be impossible to get in and out of there. And if you needed to get an emergency vehicle in and out some days, I don't know how you would.
Yes, it is, especially with the new, the giant curbs that they've, that they've put on the Church Street. I think about those, too, like, and then having cars on it, it's scary to go on there.
This is a smart, a smart thing to do.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Okay. Mostly made. Second.
Yep.
Discussion. The only thing I'll add to this is the, I want to thank Becca and the group that's been working on this stuff. I've been to a couple of meetings now, and to see them come together and start to work with people that aren't very happy, you know, in some aspects, as you can see. You know, it takes a lot of work, and I appreciate the time.
It's a good group.
Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And no action on the next one? The Anna Drive.
There's an extra one here.
To approve the event permit and one-day liquor application from Kevin Lassley of the East Bridgewater Commercial Club located at One Nielsen Ave for a monster guitar event on September twentieth from twelve to five.
Second.
What's a monster guitar?
I know. It's not like monster trucks or...
I said that right, right? Monster guitar.
Activity guitar monsters? Are they just like really big guitars? Like...
Guitar monsters.
Does it, La Booboo's playing guitars? What's happening?
All right. Is there no action needed? You said, Becca, don't set there.
No, on the, there were two parts to the Traffic Advisory Committee item.
Which one?
On number twelve.
Just has the Church Street thing.
We only have the Church Street.
Oh, really?
So it's a good thing there's no action item.
Yeah. All right. So motion made on that.
Second.
Second here.
With monster guitars.
Yeah. Any further discussion, other than the fact we don't know what the hell that is?
But we're in favor of it.
We're in favor of it for sure. Oh, yeah, there it is. Yeah, okay.
One, one day only.
One day only. What hope?
One day only.
All in favor?
Why you'd need one in a day?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
We'd have the residents down there next.
Oh, boy.
Okay. I think that's it.
It's at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Announcements. Becca Lee?
I have something.
Hey!
There you go. Everybody's got something tonight.
The nine eleven remembrance ceremonies this Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Right outside the town hall at eight forty-five P.M.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the reminder.
It was twenty-four years ago. Twenty-four years ago.
Yeah. Isn't that crazy?
It's crazy.
Were you born here?
I was.
Okay.
But barely.
Nineteen ninety-nine, so I was two.
I too. Oh, wow. Good, bless you.
You're telling us way too much.
Okay, sorry.
She's the same age as my grandson.
So through our insurance agency, Maya, we received a grant. We applied for a grant and we got approved for it to do emergency action plans at each town building. So it's kind of, falls in line with OSHA compliance. We had our first initial meeting the other day where a representative from Safety Net, we went around to each building. So what they provide, you know, they identify emergency action locations, general protocol for unforeseen and foreseen emergencies. Each building will get drawings of the building, and then at the end, when everything is done, we're going to have kind of like a mock safety drill. We kind of go over with all the staff, the emergency action plan, you know, if something were to happen. But one great thing, Greg, he lives in Connecticut, and he came, came down here to do the, to do the plans, but he said to me and both Brian and Kylie, he said, "People around here in this building, they really work together. They're all so nice, and they all get along." So it was like, it was really nice to hear, because this is a really great place to work, and we do, we do all, you know, pretty much, you know, get along and, yeah, come together. So that was really nice to hear, so I wanted you guys to hear that, too.
That is nice.
We got such a great compliment.
Town halls get a bad rap sometimes, you know, clicking and gossipy, so it's great to hear that.
Yeah, it's huge to highlight. We need, Tom, and I like this, we need to highlight the good things. I think we've had a long, crazy, intense meeting, and that's so nice to hear.
Is it over yet?
Yeah, so, thank you.
Charlie?
Um, I'm going to, not talk about MBTA. We'll do that in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I did want to say that I was happy to be one of the representatives a couple of weeks ago. We had East Bridgewater's owner, William Driscoll, was awarded his high school diploma at a ceremony on Friday, August twenty-second, down the hill at the Junior Senior High School Library. He was drafted in nineteen sixty-seven, and when he was due to graduate from Rosendale High School at that point, but he never received his diploma. He did serve in the U.S. Army from nineteen sixty-seven to sixty-nine, including a tour of duty in Vietnam. We had Boston City Councilor Ed Flynn as a keynote speaker, and he presented Mr. Driscoll with his diploma. Other speakers included Robert Notch of the Office of Veteran Advocate and Truck DeCoste of the Office of Veteran Advocate. Members of Mr. Driscoll's family were there, including his wife, children, grandchildren. They're all in the audience for the ceremony. Mr. Driscoll, I've been looking forward to this for many years, and all this was due to the efforts of collaboration by East Bridgewater Veteran Service Agent Chris Buckley, the OVA, the East Bridgewater Public Schools, and also obviously the Boston Public Schools. Because he wasn't graduating here from us here in East Bridgewater. He was still graduating from Rosendale. But it was a great event. I'm thrilled for him and his family. Wonderful time.
It's awesome. Kudos to all who made that happen. That's great.
Very nice. Thank you, Charlie. More discussion? Carol?
I have nothing left to say to it.
Nothing left to come out, really? There's nobody here. I'm sure everybody listens to you.
No, you know what? I mean, sometimes meetings are more difficult than others. People come to us with their concerns, and sometimes it's not as fun. But it's always why we're here, so we just listen and do the best we can.
Hundred percent. Catherine, anything?
No.
All right. Just two quick ones for me. Guns and Hoes Golf Tournament was today. Again, fun time. Police and Fire come together. They have a charity that they raise money. This is their big event. Seems like Cecilia kind of does a lot of the heavy lifting, and I want to kudos to her for putting on a great bams over at Ritter's. Then we have the auctions and food and everything afterwards. But yeah, real fun time and glad to see both, again, to Rebecca's point earlier, you know, see those two groups come together and work as a team to do something like this is really, it's fun to watch. The last thing, I don't know if anybody's seen, I've heard, I've got a couple of calls. They have started the work for the sewer project. They are clearing the land. So if you do get any phone calls from trees going down between, they started on the Brockton side of the project and are coming through, it'll take about a, probably about a month for them to do the clearing. Scott Johnson, one of the local guys, was hired to do, to do the work, which is really good to hear. And like I said, we're off and running, and hopefully we'll have more news as we, as we move forward.
One thing, because you mentioned that, the, did you see that town tavern is having, they're auctioning off the use of their parking lot for the day of the Chili Chowder Festival to a group in town that wants to do it to raise money. So, you know, good for them. Like, they're not even open yet, but they're trying to, you know, do something supportive in the community and, you know, make a fundraiser available to a local group that's trying to do something for good, so.
Yeah, that's right. That's great to hear.
Thanks to Dave Barry and his team for that.
Good. Okay, I think that's what we have. Now I have to read my cheat sheet.
You do.
All right. We move that the East Bridgewater Select Board go into executive session for the reasons pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation to negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, health agents, library director, billing commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, treasurer, collector, director of assessing, IT director, town accountant, town administrator, pursuant to Mass General Law Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Select Board for collective bargaining with the following unions: firefighters, clerical, Department of Public Works, and Superior Offices. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigation position of the Select Board in the following litigation: opiate litigation update, Purdue Sacklet Settlement, nine different settlement. In discussing the matter, an open session will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position in the chair, so declares. And that the Select Board will not reconvene in open session at the end of executive session. Confirmed by myself, Peter Spigone, Chair?
Second.
All right. Now it says discussion. Should we discuss anything? Anybody want to talk about anything?
Nope.
Chair, Peter Spigone, I declare having an open meeting collective bargaining contract negotiations and litigation may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the Select Board. Confirmed by the Chair. Has this done? Any roll call? Yes, roll call. Peter Spigone, aye?
Carol Julius, aye.
Catherine Mellon, aye.
That's the end of my discussion. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you and good night. It's not like Walter Cronkite used to say.
No, it was good night and good...